Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Monday, October 1st of the Hudson City Council. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the role, please?
Mayor Brou is absent. Lee Wyland?
Here.
Randy Morissette?
Here.
Dennis O'Connell?
Here.
Paul Radamacher?
Here.
Scott O'Malley?
Here.
Alan Burchill?
Here.
I'd like to say at this time, I'm sitting in for the mayor, but I'm still reserving my right as 4th District Representative to vote. So, and speak for the 4th District. I would like to, at this time, take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak to the council? Nobody else? Just a minute, we'll get to you in just a second. Thank you. All right, hearing none, I'm going to move on to, I'm going to make two minor changes to the agenda. First, we have people here for proclamations, and I'd like to have them remove those right up into this section of the agenda. And then in new business, we have somebody here for Item D. I would like to make that Item A in the new business section. And then third is that in Finance Committee, Proposal for Fire Department Fire Fire to Pay Policy, we're removing that from the agenda for today, and that'll come back on a future agenda. Any questions? All right. Well, first, I'd like to recognize Caroline Baker as the President of the Toastmasters Club. Can you come to the podium? And we have a proclamation here for Toastmasters Month that I've asked Caroline to read. Come up to the podium.
Whereas Toastmasters International is a nonprofit organization created 83 years ago to develop better speaking skills and leadership skills among its members, and whereas the mission of Toastmasters is to provide a mutually supportive and positive learning environment for members to develop communication and leadership skills, which in turn fosters self-confidence and personal growth, and whereas through many years of outstanding achievement, Toastmasters International has grown to more than 10,500 clubs with 211,000 members in 90 countries worldwide. And whereas by assisting in the development of communication skills, Toastmaster International has helped millions of individuals to overcome their personal barriers to effective performance in virtually every endeavor of life.
And therefore, I, John D. Burrell, Mayor of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim October 2007 as Toastmasters Month in the City of Hudson, and encourage all citizens to recognize the many accomplishments of this outstanding organization, and is devoted to communication and leadership development. Well, thank you very much, Caroline. It's a wonderful organization.
Thank you. Is there any possibility we could get a publicity picture? I have some people here that I would just love to be part of that. They're part of my team as officers.
You bet. You want to be standing in front of the council or standing up?
Shake your hand.
Fake mic.
Give her the check for the million dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, I got quite a few.
Oh, yes, yes.
Got to get close enough so Randy can get the whole picture.
Good picture.
Thank you very much. A whole night of firsts, I guess, huh? And I lost my pen. Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, the next proclamation we have is from the Fire Prevention Week. Pete Frye, would you like to come up and give that one?
I believe it's, next week is Fire Prevention Week, and do proclaim, whereas smoke and poisonous gases are the leading cause of death in fires and can kill long before the flames reach us, and whereas developing a home fire escape plan and practicing home fire drills regularly are critical to escaping fire safely. Whereas proper installation, testing, and maintenance of smoke alarms are a part of through home fire escape plan. By preventing the leading cause of fires, leading cause of home fires, by developing and practicing home fire escape plans, people can greatly reduce their risk of fire. And whereas the fire service of the Hudson Fire Department is dedicated to the safety, life, and property from the devastating effects of fire. Whereas the members of the Fire Service are joined by citizens of the community in businesses, schools, service clubs, organizations in their fire prevention efforts.
I therefore, I, John D. Burrell, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7th through the 13th, 2007, as Fire Prevention Week, and call upon the people of Hudson to participate in fire prevention activities at home, at work, and at school, and heed the message of "Practice your escape plan", as the 2007 Fire Prevention Week theme suggests, and take the steps needed to make their homes and their families safe from fires. Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't know how many times you guys heard the fire trucks go out this weekend, but I'm always happy to, I live right on Vine Street or off of it, and I hear every time you guys go out, and you guys do a good job. Thank you. All right. Next, I'd like to move on to the consent agenda items. Could you enumerate those, please?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of September 17th, 2007, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $425,922.59, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's Office on request. To approve the issuance of two regular operators licenses for the period October 2nd, 2007 through June 30th, 2009, additional information is available on request in the Clerk's Office. To approve the use of a broker for the sale of the Fire Department's 1991 tanker truck. To place on file the quarterly report of the Parks Department and the Community Access Board minutes of September 25th, 2007. That is all.
Can I take a motion to approve those minutes as read?
Roll call.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes. Motion passes. All right, moving down the agenda here, we get to Updates on Projects, I believe is next, and Chuck.
Yes, good evening. Couple of items. First off, the Crestview and Carmichael Project is, you know, is moving along on schedule. Few horn honks and, you know, not too many people telling us we're number one with their hands or anything. That's, you know, that's on schedule to be completed yet this year. But quite frankly, with a couple of our projects, we're getting killed a little bit because of the rain. You know, I heard on the radio today, they talked about, we were in a three-inch drought, now we're in a surplus of like four and a half inches, and so that's making us have to do a few little adjustments to the Nine Aldrich Project. And one of them is, is that, you know, if it was, if it was the middle of summer and we could allow that subgrade to dry up, the six inches would be fine. But because of the wet conditions and things not drying out, we are recommending beefing that section up to nine inches along the road there, which is, you know, it'll add another 13,000 to $15,000 to the project. So I wanted you to be aware of that and ask if you have any questions. Along that lines, too.
One question there, does that have to come back through Finance then, for the additional funds?
When the project, because, you know, there's contingencies in engineering and all those things, I would say at the end of the project, if we're over what was budgeted then, and Betty is aware of it, she's looking for funding, so we'll.
Most likely have to address that when everything is paid and done and see where we are on total project cost. And if we do have to, then Betty is looking for.
How does that impact our end date?
It shouldn't impact our end date. We're making a few minor adjustments, one of which is, at one time, we talked about pouring the curb on one side of the road, and then a week later doing the other side. We've modified that now to just doing them both at the same time, but using high early, so they can get on it in three days within, as opposed to seven. And that should work just fine, because the road is wide enough to still allow for parking. So that's one of the things we're doing to keep that on schedule.
And does that?
Is there completion date on that, Joe?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, but I, they were shooting for the end of October, and maybe with final, I believe somewhere in the middle of November.
Does the high early also add to the cost?
No. They had 500, it's going to add about $1,000 to the project cost, but that'll be reduced by 500, because they don't have to do two mobilizations, they don't have to come out there twice. So the amount of money you'll save in, you know, professional services alone by that time-saving, you know, that'll, it's a wash in my mind.
All right, thank you.
Now, the other item, too, I wanted to mention was, you know, we did submit to the DNR the permitting and all of that for the wall project, and when they issued their letter on August 13th, they copied the Corps of Engineers. I was notified last week from the Corps that they never received it, that letter, from the DNR, and so there is a permit, and it was a 30-day permit, but they said they can, you know, squeeze that into 15 days. And so that's delaying some of the work down on the wall project until after October 10th. Hopefully, that's the worst case. Hopefully, the Corps of Engineers, what they do is they send out letters to Fish and Wildlife, as well as the U.S. Park Service, and so if they get those comments back sooner, one would hope that they could process that a little more efficient.
Can they do any preliminary work ahead of that dates, or no?
Outside the ordinary high water, so we have to stay away from the water. And it's awfully difficult for the contractor to do that in that, you know, what they like to do, they don't want to box themselves in.
Sure.
And, so, but they are hauling some fill and they are doing some items, so. And, you know, as, I think they were planning on getting in there about October 3rd now, you know, so it's pushed back a week. But my fear is, though, is that may put the trail in jeopardy to get that done this year.
That's what I was going to ask about your end date again. Okay.
I guess that's about it, unless you have any questions for me.
Carmichael Road project. How long, when do you think that, anticipate that to be completed?
That's the same timeline, the first part of November, substantially complete.
And Cooley Road?
Cooley Road, they are, gas is in there right now, and they'll be pouring curb the end of this week. And so I suspect by mid to late October, that'll be completed.
Any questions on any other projects? Okay. We'll move on. Thank you. Devin, update on health insurance.
The Ad-Hoc Committee met this morning with some of the union members. We did receive an extension from the state of 30 days. The normal deadline is October 1st, they notified them, but any change, they could give us a 30-day extension to October 31st, which is the maximum they'll give. Today, I got out to all the employees and all the annuitants, a application form. We are, the committee is going to attempt to get applications, get quotes, I should say, in before the end of the month. So that's the process we're working on. We're trying to fast-track it as much as we can, so. So I, we, there will most likely will, assuming we get quotes back, there will most likely be a special meeting at the very end of October, you know, to make a decision one way or the other. Because we do need to try to notify the state by October 31st.
So when the notes went out?
They noticed, all the application material went out. We had the meeting this morning, and staff worked on it, and we got everything out today, so that they got it in a timely manner.
So they know they need to have it back by October?
In a week.
One week, okay.
And that will allow the individual companies to hopefully provide us quotes. And me, also, they'll do a chart, if you will, saying this is what the employees have now, this is what these plans are, so that the unions can determine whether they consider that substantially equivalent. So all that's hopefully going to take place during the next three weeks.
All right. I'd like to actually move on to Item D in new business, which is easement agreement with Matt and Michelle to construct a fence in the utility easement area. David Gray is here to talk to this one.
That's fairly straightforward. The applicant lives at 66 Coach Light Drive in the Lighthouse at Hudson Pier subdivision. And the property has a 15-foot easement, utility easement, running along the south property line. And the reason for the easement is there's a storm sewer pipe that runs east and west along the applicant's property to a holding pond behind their house, and they wish to erect a small fence along that easement. I guess staff has no, I guess, no reason to not allow them to inspect the fence. They do have an easement agreement, and they have reviewed it, and they have agreed with all the conditions of the easement agreement. So staff is recommending to allow the fence to be constructed.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Any more discussion, or any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's move on to A. Review bids and award contract for St. Crey Business Park Utility Extension and East Highway 35 subdivision project.
That's board of commissioners, sure if everyone had seen the project, but basically, bids were taken on August 14th for the extension of sanitary sewer from Hudson Meadows across Hanley to service the seven lots proposed by the St. Crey Business Park Corporation, and then the extension of Water Main across 35, this is Tower Road and the old 35. So extension of Water Main through this area and looping up to connect in where the, actually, where Water Main ends right now. So Water Main will be a loop, sewer will be extended, and then the creation of these seven lots. Bids were taken, there was eight bidders. The low bidder was F&amp;K Trucking and Excavation out of River Falls in the amount of $765,819.15. The St. Crey Business Park did ratify these bids and would like to have your approval on them.
Okay, thanks Angela. I have a motion.
Could I ask a question of Angela first?
Sure.
Before making a motion. Angela, you've probably read the memo we received late this afternoon from VRA.
Yes.
With some general comments and some concerns. I assume you've read the concerns, then some things that do need to be changed. Is this going to in any way change the nature of what the RFP should have said?
In the original, what was originally laid out was a loop road in this area. And based on the Town of Troy's, and I should have said this, Town of Troy's comments, they preferred only one access onto Old 35. And so with Denny Darnold and myself, actually, Denny laid out a new layout for the business park, and we have accommodated the utilities to fit in this two-one access rather than this loop two-access road. It is going to be on, and we have made the changes. We do need to address the comments that were submitted today. And the Town of Troy has their Plan Commission on Thursday, and their town board meeting is next Thursday. So we do need to, Town of Troy, I'll just say, owns the right-of-way. It's all township to the right-of-way. So this connection to the right-of-way needs to be approved by them. So right now, we're, we want to move forward with the bids, but we do realize that we still need approval internally, and we need to address the comments. F&amp;K was quite a bit lower than the next bidder, as you can see. And so we do want to move forward. There is not many changes as far as utilities. It's pretty much just adjusting them for a one-access rather than a two. So we do not foresee any major quantity changes with this revised layout. It's still servicing the seven lots that we had proposed, it's just the access points are different, basically.
So you don't believe, you don't believe that the winning bidder would come back to us at any time to say, well, you're pretty much changed the specs from what we bid on?
No, because it still has a 12-inch Water Main, still coming, looping through. It's still the same sanitary sewer, and generally the same layout. The sewers still came up through here and came up to service these lots to cut through. So the actual impact to the utility is not, as far as the change of access, has not changed the utilities. And we have talked to F&amp;K, and they, you know, I've made them aware of this revised layout, and they are fine with that, and we are proceeding, or they would like to proceed with how it was bid, or, you know, proceed with the contract, knowing that these changes are in place.
Would it be to our benefit, though, are you reducing the lineal footage? I mean, are we actually asking them to do less work by having one entrance versus two?
It actually comes out to about the same. It really does. Because we're still, just based on where the utilities existed and how they have to run through the property, there's really, it's pretty much, instead of running along this street, it's running along this street. So it's, there really, it wasn't enough change, plus or minus, as far as utilities. So that's why I always felt we could proceed with the bids as taken.
I'll move.
Any ideas?
I have one more question.
That's fine.
You may have already answered this, but one recommendation is maybe to take in some right-of-way. Would that impact where the utilities would go at this point, or?
No, at this point, it's, they're just stubbed out to the edge of the right-of-way.
So that's really an odd.
And the plat has not, the plat will be done by Doug Zoller. And so he has not prepared the plat yet, based on waiting for final approval from Troy. But as, you know.
So you're stubbing out to Old 35?
Yep, we're just stubbing out to 35, should future extensions ever be needed.
But maybe some additional fill needed, though, at some time.
We're looking at the possibility of how we can, as, if you've seen off the tower, it does get low. Everything drains through this corner. So this lot, Lot 4, is of concern that either we have to make a requirement that it's a slab-on-grade building, or they have to have an internal booster pump if they, you know, so choose. So we're looking, though, also at fill as another option. So the internal stuff, we definitely have to address comments, and hopefully also, once we get the Town of Troy's comments, we can incorporate that in there.
Okay, well, I move that we accept the lowest bid from F&amp;K Trucking of River Falls in the amount of $765,819 contingent upon approval from the Town of Troy.
Second. Discussion, I have a discussion point. Do you see, Catherine, do you see any, the changes in the design here?
I mean, there's going to be minor changes in contracts.
Okay, so there won't be any issue there?
No, as far as rebidding, it's not a.
Okay, thank you. All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I want to move on to combining wards and using three polling places for elections. Ordinance number 14-07. Could you outline the changes for us, please?
Well, right now, we've got 14 wards, and we use two polling places, but due to the number of registered voters in this city, I believe it's in the public's best interest to establish a third polling place just to relieve the congestion on election days, and I know that 2008 is going to be heavily voted, and so we want to be prepared to meet those needs.
Nancy, could I ask you a question on timing on this? The earliest possible election that we could have would be if we needed a primary in February. You're going to have to order equipment for this third place. Do you need action very, very soon? Do you need a first reading tonight? Do you need us to suspend the rules to not have a first reading tonight, or can we just do first reading?
No, we're still okay with timing on it. We've got time to do this at the second October meeting, and the ordering of the equipment is in process, and we can get to that. Everyone's aware of what needs to be done, and it's in the budget, so there's no concerns about not having enough time or not being able to fund it.
Then I'll move for first reading.
Do I hear a second? All right. I just want to outline, just for the people in the audience here, that we're talking about here is, if I understand the changes, districts three and four then would be voting up, or would be, yeah, voting up at the United Methodist Church on Laurel Avenue is the change that we're, and the rest of the, everybody else who's in the current districts, we continue to vote.
That's correct.
Where they currently vote.
Right, and I'll send out postcards to the people that are affected by the change so that they know that there's a new location that they'll go to.
We'll be taking one group from each of the two.
Right.
And the location is basically right between the two districts.
I would like to, excuse me, Paul, go ahead.
Oh, you start, go ahead.
Well, I would like to make mention that the United Methodist Church is making the use of their facility and their billing available to the city at no charge. I think that's generous of them.
It is, and I actually was going to comment on that, you know, especially if we're going in February, or it might be snow in March, April, it's going to be messy in there. I think we should give them something for a cleanup fee or something.
I offered.
I know, they still said no, huh?
They did. They want to do it as a community service.
That's, well, that's, as Scott said, very generous.
They are to be congratulated.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I can just add one more thing. It also is a little handicap accessible, but there won't be any issues. You know, the roadway is on grade, the parking lot's on grade, so you won't have to deal with any of those issues.
All right, we're going to move on to Item C in new business. Consider authorizing Carmichael and Carmichael Road and Vine Street Court or traffic analysis by Bone Stro, Bone Stro.
Are you concerned about the price, or?
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So we can discuss.
Discussion?
I was speaking to Betty today, and she didn't know anything about this, and she just would like to research it a little. I know Denny said at our meeting last week that he had the money, but the way we are with our budget, I, you know, there is no hurry on this. We can wait until next meeting when Betty's here in Finance, and we can make sure we've got the money to go forward.
Well, you're right in that right now, at this moment, we wouldn't know where the money's going to come from.
Right.
Because Betty's not here, and Denny's not here.
So I mean.
So why don't we hold it over and start running through Finance at next session, and then full council.
So we got a motion, a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe that the next thing is to go into closed session, but typically, the mayor will view additional information.
Publishing last week.
Communications items of future agendas from any Alder person.
I have a comment that I'd like to congratulate the St. Paul Pioneer Press for publishing last week a study and analysis of crime by the FBI. At a time when there's been a lot of press coverage of police activity in Hudson, some people might have gotten the incorrect impression that we are the Wild West and that we are seeing a rise in crime. Actually, that is not the case. The study done by the FBI showed that from 2005 to 2006, violent crime decreased by 33% in Hudson, and property crimes decreased by 11%, which, by the way, continues a long trend of decreases in crime in Hudson, based on population. A handy rule of thumb is this, if you need a comparison. According to the FBI's study, in Minneapolis, the number of violent crimes, that's crimes against people per 10,000 population, is 158. In St. Paul, it's 82. In Hudson, that number is eight. So I think that we still can be proud of our city, and I thank the newspaper for publishing that study.
And the police force for keeping track and catching the property crimes.
You're right.
All right, Items Future Agenda from City Attorney. City Administrator?
We're continuing to, I think the budgets will be inputted, the final ones the next day or so. We'll go back through and check the personnel costs, so Betty may have something for you preliminary at the next meeting.
Well, at this point, we need to, we'd like to go into closed session, to convene into closed session on pursuit to 19-85. session, on pursuit to 19-851E, Wisconsin State, to discuss bargaining issues related to the, to employee health insurance benefits, after which we'll reconvene into open session.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote?
O'Connell?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.